You up? Lord Jay gets here right at nine o'clock. You're live.
Good morning. One welcome, uh, one year for Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting is March fourth. Meeting called meeting order.
Um, thank you. That's Craig Slate, you'll pray for us.
I thank you for what you do for us, how you consistently bless us and provide for us, protect us. I thank you for this opportunity that we have to come together, to gather, to consider the business of the county, to cooperate with each other, or for the betterment of our community. I thank you for the privilege that we have to participate in governing. And I thank you, Lord, that you've given these men a passion to come and to serve their fellow man. And I pray, Father, that they will feel a sense of appreciation for what they do every day, make sacrifices. Father, thank you for those men and women that protect us every day, whether they be law enforcement, or emergency operations folks, or our folks. For they sacrifice everything so that we can have safety and security. And it's a wonderful blessing for our community. We should not thank you for bringing it. Thank you, Lord, for that. Christ, thank you, man.
Amen. Thank you. All right, under public comments, I have one, Melinda Wells. Is Melinda here?
Yeah, come forward.
Come forward and state your name and address into the mic, please.
Good morning. My name's Melinda Wells. My address, eight thirty, Clara Foot Road, Braxton, Mississippi, three nine zero four four. What else was it?
That's good.
That's good.
Okay, um, I'm hoping I'm in the right place, because I'm not really sure, but this is where everybody told me I probably need to come. But, um, my brother, he has a mobile home that was moved right beside my address. And there's a road right beside our address.
A public road?
My brother's address.
Is it a public road?
It's not a public road. It's just a road.
A driveway.
I'm not really understanding. All I know is my grandmother and my dad have went to court several times for this same property. But I have this old prop document from two thousand and eight where, you know, it's showing where it's on my brother and property. But the neighbor don't want to let anybody use the road except for who he wants to use the road. And I'm trying to figure out, is there any way we can make that a public road? Or what we have to do to make it a public road? Is it something we have to do? I'm talking to a surveyor, because I don't know anything about this. All I know is, it's been a feud between the two families. And my brother, where his house is, the road is so long, he got a little spot where it's draining water, where it's a lot of water. So he's been, what you call it, draining it with some kind of machine. But it keep filling up with water. Some, they thinking maybe it's a spring or something up under there. I don't know. All I know is, it's gonna be really, really expensive for him to get a road. Like, they're talking about eleven thousand dollars plus. So I'm just trying to see, because this road is already there, it would be cheaper to me to just, if we gotta put gravel, whatever, on it, to make it a public road. So I'm just trying to see what we need to do to possibly make it a public road and put a name on it.
I think as far as a public road, it would have to be brought up to the county's standards.
Standards, right.
That's right. With a sixty-foot right away from the main road coming off of Clearfoot.
So we would have to do that?
Mm-hmm.
But how do I know if I'm able to do that? I mean, can I do that?
Mr. Slate.
We gotta figure out who actually owns that road.
Right. Well, according to these documents, and it specifically says, please respect the line from the lawyer, that was my grandmother's lawyer, that she's been telling the neighbor that's been against everything. So I think it's my grandmother where it was, but now it's my brother.
You probably gonna have to get some kind of legal advice from an attorney to work on this, and because we're not-
But from this, from this, from Rankin County standpoint, it's nothing-
We don't have the authority to grant anybody permission to go use a road.
But I'm saying, if it's his road, if it's my brother's.
Yeah, our tax session's office would be the place to go, I would think.
To start, yes. So let's walk through what the situation is.
Okay.
We know that it's not a public road. These gentlemen are in charge of public roads.
Right.
Okay. So because it's a private road, you were told to come here. I'm glad you came so that we could straighten that out, because this actually is not the place to determine rights.
Okay, see, like, by name, yeah.
Exactly. So, uh, so this was as good enough a place to start as, as you could get, because we can help you figure out, well, what is the right place to go. Unfortunately, where it's a private property matter, that is, a dispute apparently between private property owners, somebody has to step in that has legal authority to say, between those two, who has the right of use of that road? Who controls the right of use? That's a chancery court.
Okay.
A chancery judge determines whether or not a party or another party has the greater right to utilize the road.
Right.
And there's laws and statutes and cases that determine how that's gonna come out. And none of these guys up here are chancery judges.
Okay.
That's down the hill at the Rankin County Chancery Court.
So I need to go over there?
Well, you can start there. I will tell you that what it sounds like to me, given the fact that the neighbor has said, I'm controlling this, and here are the people who can use-
Yeah, but this document says he don't.
Unfortunately, nobody in this room can tell you, does that document control, or is there another document, or is there another set of facts that we don't know about? So it's gonna take you guys getting with an attorney-
Okay.
-who will help you walk through the chancery court process. Generally speaking, folks that try to help themselves and do it on their own without legal counsel in chancery court will run into a lot of issues.
Okay.
Okay? So I, my strong suggestion would be, get with your brother, since he's the one who needs the access-
Right.
-and go see an attorney who's qualified to help you all with land issues-
Right.
-and get something going in chancery court that will address this once and for all for y'all.
Okay.
Okay?
Sorry, we could-
Do you still have that attorney? Is he still available?
Yeah, he's still my mother's attorney. Yeah.
It may be a good starting point.
Yeah, I just called and left a message with him. Someone talked to him, so.
Good luck on it.
All right. Well, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
All right, um, oh, business. We have minutes from February fifteenth, February twenty-nine.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Brad makes a motion to approve.
I second.
Sid seconds. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes. Our consent agenda. Have y'all had a chance to look it over, have any questions?
Motion approved.
Brad makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes. Ms. Caroline Gilbert.
Morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all?
Good. How are you?
Good. Okay, real quick, I have item A, petitions for change of assessments of twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three personal property and twenty-three real property assessments.
All right, have a motion.
Motion.
Scott makes a motion to approve.
I second.
Sid seconds. Motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
All right, item B, authority to refund twenty-one through twenty-three mobile home taxes and authority to void the mobile home tax bills for the mobile home account two four two three two. This mobile home has been assessed as real property.
Motion approved.
Brad makes a motion to approve. Scott second. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
And Stacy's had a training, so I-
All right, you wanna do her?
I will. Um, item A, petition to adjust twenty twenty-three homestead exemption supplemental rules.
Motion approved. Second.
Brad makes a motion. Jay seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ishii, fire coordinator, come forward, please, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
It is, uh, it's that time for us to start ordering some more fire trucks. Uh, right now, we're, uh, if we order a truck, you're looking at about two and a half, three years. So, uh, pose in front of you this morning is to order, uh, two twenty twenty-six Pierce responder fire trucks. Um, these trucks will be going to Lake Harbor and Southwest to replace some fifteen-year-old trucks. Actually, by the time these trucks come in, those trucks will be about sixteen years old.
All right. Any questions from any guys here?
How much deposit has he put down?
Just four and go. Okay. Okay. How many you plan on ordering?
Two.
Two? Are they going to?
Southwest and Lake Harbor.
And you said they're fifteen, to replace fifteen, sixteen-year-old trucks?
So the-
And they're commercials, so they're gonna have a fifteen-year-old-
So they have a fifteen-year shelf life on them, um, just due to, you know, everybody still blames COVID. So, uh, you know, if you, if you order it today, where we used to get them on a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty days, now you're looking at about two and a half, three years. Um, we can't predict the weather. So if a tornado or hurricane comes in, in the Gulf, or in Florida where they're built, I mean, you're, you're on a deadline. Um, I'm supposed to leave, uh, in two weeks to go pick up some trucks that's been ordered for three years. Um, I got a phone call Friday that those, we may have to postpone that trip for another week, uh, just waiting on emergency lights to come in. So it's-
Three years?
Three years. That's what it's taken to get a truck. Two and a half to three years.
Wow.
So, yeah, it's, it's, I mean, so you gotta, I mean, you gotta plan ahead. I mean, it's one of them, like, I cannot wait till the day or the year that the truck's going out to order it. I mean, you're, you're another two and a half years after that.
So Brad, are these state contract prices?
They are state contract.
And this is locked in?
Locked in, yes, sir.
Okay.
Where do we, what are we gonna do with the old ones?
So the old ones, we will, after we get the new ones in, we'll strip those trucks down, what we always do. We'll turn around and sell them, so that money will come back. Uh, I believe the last trucks, if I'm not mistaken, we got how much? About eighty grand for those trucks. So, I mean, I know that's nowhere close to what that truck's cost, but I mean, it's, I mean, after, after fifteen years, getting eighty thousand back for a truck, I mean, it's, I mean-
What's a new, what's a new fire truck, twenty?
Five hundred and-
Five twenty?
Yeah, five twenty. Sixteen years ago when I started ordering these trucks.
Equipped or not equipped?
Not equipped. This is just a, a, a fire truck. Uh, these trucks will come with some ladders, one nozzle, um, it will come with a thermal imaging camera and an AED. That's it.
So what else is there to go on?
A lot. Uh, fire hoses, air packs. Uh, these trucks, sixteen years ago, when we started ordering, uh, I went back and pulled some records. It's sixteen years ago, this same truck was two hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Double.
So double. Oh, and the sad part about those trucks that, that y'all bought were fully equipped, not stripped down.
What was the difference in years? How many years ago?
Sixteen years ago.
Sixteen years.
So how much more did it take to fully equip it with what we need?
So the good thing about it is you've already bought that stuff. Uh, so we will pull it off the old truck and put it on a new truck. That's the good thing about it. But if you was to spec one out, turnkey, you're probably looking at a million dollars. Air packs now are about ten thousand apiece. Um-
You're saying a million dollars per truck?
Million dollars per truck. Easy.
Brad, I didn't get to talk to you last time. I really appreciate the job you did for us-
Yes, sir.
On the interim.
Yes, sir.
Did a great job.
Yes.
Heard nothing but good things. Appreciate your work.
All right, so I guess we're gonna make the motion.
Motion.
Make the motion.
I second.
All right, Scott makes a motion, uh, for the authority to issue a PO for the purchase of two twenty twenty-seven trucks. Sid seconds. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you.
I got one more thing, if I can bring it up, just, just real quick. Um, I know last year, we, uh, y'all gave us permission to use the Conex buildings, the burn buildings down here, uh, at Mike Harrison's old shop. We could go in there, do our training and stuff like that. Um, we were teaching a volunteer certification class that actually starts tonight. Um, it will run for the next three months. Um, is there a problem with us going back to using that building the way it was intended, doing some burning in it, you know, doing some smoking, so that, you know, these volunteer guys can actually come around and do some search patterns in it?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I just, did the city have a problem with it?
I'm not sure why we moved away from live fire.
Yeah, you are.
How many, how many are in this volunteer cert class?
So I have-
I'm bouncing off of that, but I-
So I have twenty-eight in this class that's signed up, so which is a, is gonna be a very large class.
That's a pretty good, pretty good class.
We started last year with twenty-five. We graduated eighteen, which is, I mean, a really good number. So that's eighteen brand-new firemen from Rankin County to respond. Um, and the reason why I ask these questions, or want to get back to using that building, is with eighteen folks with full-time jobs, for them to get their live fire training that they have to have for their certificate. I mean, you, you gotta have it. I mean, I can't train you on something that you've never done. For us to, you know, try to schedule it on a weekend or a night at the Fire Academy is difficult, or go to Flowood. And I will say this, City of Flowood was very gracious to us last year. They worked with us. It was a scheduling nightmare, but we got it done. So if we could go back to using our building for, you know, for, I mean, just for our guys, I ain't saying open it up like we did in the past and let everybody come, but just for, for, for our folks, for, for us to burn.
Was it liability issue for us? Is that what was driving that?
No, sir.
Let's just go back to normal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why don't you guys add that to the agenda, that we're adding authority, fire coordinator to schedule live fire training, and any other smoke training, any other associated training for our volunteer cert guys? And then approve it, if we, if you don't mind.
I'll make a motion to add this to the agenda.
Second.
All right, um, Brad makes a motion to add, I'm gonna call it live fire training for Rankin County trainees.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Scott second. Set motion. This is to add it to the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All right, motion passes to add it now.
I'm making a motion to approve live training. Second.
Brad makes a motion to approve the live fire training.
Mark it, Roger.
Scott, second. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Thank y'all. Guys, real quick, I was gonna say, repeat, thank you, Brett, for, uh, doing the interim job for the past few months. Did a very good job. But I just want to thank you all for allowing me to serve as your emergency management director going forward. And I look forward to working with you all and the citizens of Rankin County before, during, and after an emergency. If y'all ever need, just let me know.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Brett.
Mike Harrison.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mike.
Uh, road work accomplished and road work scheduled for March.
I think you have a motion.
So move.
Sid makes a motion. Second.
I'll second.
Brad second. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
I got two permits, Mr. President, we're taking more than time. One is Comcast being there, Bernie Jones in the River Falls, in there, District Five permit.
I have a motion.
I make a motion.
Mr. District Five. Uh, well, all right, Sid made a motion. Would you like that happen?
Sure, yep.
All right, Sid second. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
I got a ceasefire for a fallen oak phase three, uh, District Four permit.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott, second. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
First item we have on the agenda is a preliminary plat. This is on Canal Place, Part One. This is actually a PRV development on Lake Harbor Road off of Highway forty-three. We recommend approval of that preliminary plat. And as you know, on the PRV subdivisions, we just, the county just has the roads. This is actually an existing road. Uh, so expect we'll put some construction conditions upon it. Uh, they have, they have given the additional ri, they show the additional right-of-way on the plat to get it in front of the lots to sixty-foot wide, but we recommend approval of that preliminary plat.
All right, I, I have one question after looking at them out. Um, that road is not one of the better roads, county plateau roads. It serves a good many houses, and fixing to serve a lot more.
Right.
When we, do we have any authority being the road is gonna be ours in upgrading that road? Requiring the developer, or is that all PRV?
I'm gonna ask for Craig to help a little bit on that. Uh, I'm not sure, upgraded, this is a PRV subdivision on existing, it's just lots on an existing county road, Lake Harbor Road off of forty-three.
Yes.
And the question Mr. Gaines is asking is, can the county require the developer to upgrade that road?
I mean, it, when they get through it to the development, we're talking about how many lots in there?
The first phase is twelve.
Right.
Uh, if they, they potentially could build a street off of that and add another ten or twelve lots.
It's gonna, the road's gonna come forth.
Yes, absolutely. As a condition of approval of the plat, we can simply require the developer to maintain and/or upgrade that road. You have that authority under your development ordinance, and it's our road.
Yeah.
So that's what makes this, uh, a, a county jurisdiction, even though it's PRV, and they're gonna control things like lot size, set bags, house size, uh, inspection, et cetera, et cetera. That, that's all gonna fall into them. We still control the road piece of it. So there's good interaction there. Make that part of the, the condition.
Mine, I would want at a minimum that the road is put back, or road is in the same condition it is today, whenever they have finished this ten or twelve lot construction.
So the plan that we would normally go through there is when we get the final plat, we're gonna make them put up a letter of credit?
That's right.
Uh, on the existing road? It's, it's not a new road, but it's, we'd do the same thing on the existing road. It just wouldn't be, uh, they're putting, all they're putting up a letter of credit for normally is any additional improvements and the final wearing surface. So, uh, and obviously, we won't let them put the final wearing surface on until they get the road back repaired. So that would be the plan at final plat stage. But I appreciate that going on the record now, that we're looking at that in the future.
For whoever's listening, this isn't uncommon, if we're doing it anywhere else in the county.
Absolutely, that's correct.
For, okay.
My recollection is, we've had something like, and maybe not PRV, but something like this, where we had development with an existing road. And, and as a part of the letter of credit, Tim actually calculated and estimated what is the likely, uh, what's the likely repair work that's gonna be required before we get to overlay. So we can do the same thing here, and just assume that there's gonna be some level of damage.
Yeah.
Assume some cost to actually bring the base back to standard and then do an overlay. Right.
We're doing a two-inch overlay?
Uh, yes, sir. We would, or we could do an inch and a half. It'd just depend. This is, this is an existing road, probably could get by with an inch and a half. But, I mean, and there again, in the development ordinance, we're set on our, uh, bond, on our, uh, letter of credit, it's two hundred percent of the amount. So that certainly covers some of the base repair. But if we thought it was gonna be, I think we did do that on a road that was really in, in not great shape. Uh, and we just knew there were gonna be some base repairs. We went ahead and anticipated that. But, uh, as a general rule, unless we get another huge asphalt spike like we did a few years back, the two hundred percent would cover that.
All right. Um, let's see. All right, I make a motion to approve the plat, and then we'll do the other whenever we get the final plat. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, I wanna say Brad won that one. So Brad got the second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Item B, Mr. President, uh, this is a tough one. Uh, on the Foster Road project, that's an ARPA project. The project has been completed, and in order to keep our friends at Horn happy, uh, we have a summary change order in the amount of an increase of eighty dollars, uh, for the normal reasons that the county has for a change order. Uh, we're just trying to keep the math right on the contract. Project overran by eighty bucks.
Where's Horn gonna do this?
Horn reviews the ARPA stuff.
They review all of our request.
All right.
So that, uh, we'll, we'll get the eighty dollars included, so it don't cost you about two thousand to get that one. Just for the record.
I was wondering if that was a typo when-
No, sir, that's-
Are you just gonna pay that out?
If, if Mr. Slate can make it legal, I'll, I'll try.
All right, do I have a motion?
I like a motion.
Brad makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
That, that project turned out pretty good.
It did. It turned out really, really well. And that's, uh, item C is, uh, I'll read it all, it's on this one. It's program element one point two two, UT Mountain Creek Erosion Mitigation at Foster Road. The, uh, we recommend approval of payout number one, uh, from Southeastern Pipeline Environmental Services in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And authorities issued that check. They're the ones that came in to finish that project, and they, they did a really, really good job.
Yeah, I worked on it.
Yeah, they're done.
Holy crap.
Yeah.
It looks, it looks good. It took the other contractor four months and didn't get nothing.
I'm telling you, we found a good contractor.
Yeah.
Right, he, they do good, good work.
And stepped in, you know, we were in an emergency situation, and they stepped in and, and the next day.
Right.
Yeah, we're rolling.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sid makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Brad seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Slate?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, if I may, there was, I wasn't a hundred percent sure if we were gonna get to a point where, uh, we could go ahead and take up the idea of setting the decorum rules for our public comment section. With y'all's permission, I'd like to go over those one more time and see if, if it's okay, since we're here, first meeting in March, to go ahead and get our, uh, our public comment decorum rules set for this board term. Uh, there's one, I had a supervisor, uh, that pointed out that it might be a good idea to include a requirement that our folks sign up ahead of time. I think that's a choice idea, by the way. So I'm, I'm adding that to the list. Uh, let's, uh, we, we already have a signup sheet, and Ms. Samantha helps us with that. And so I would suggest that we make that one of the items, that while it's always the board's discretion to receive anybody that hasn't signed up for public comment, uh, our preference would be that they sign up ahead of time before the meeting. So that would be the first item. Uh, the second item is that, uh, we want to keep our comments to three minutes, uh, with the ability of the board chair, our president, uh, to grant some additional time to a speaker where it's appropriate to do so. But, uh, the idea would be that each speaker has about a three-minute period of time to make their comment. Uh, just to stress, public comment is for comments. We don't question the board. Uh, we don't question other people in the room. Uh, public comment is for comments to be received by the board. Uh, number three, persons recognized to speak should direct all of their comments to the board supervisors and not to other people in the boardroom. Number four, a priority is given to our citizens, to the citizens of Rankin County, uh, to speak in public comment. This is their opportunity to address their elected officials. And so we want Rankin County citizens to have the priority ability to speak in public comment. Where we have others who are not Rankin County citizens who wish to be recognized for public comment, that can happen with the board's discretion, uh, but we want to receive all Rankin County citizens for their comment before anyone else is given an opportunity. Persons who exhibit disruptive behavior or interrupt others engaged in public comment will be required to exit the boardroom. All comments will be restricted to matters that are contained on the agenda or to matters that fall within the legal jurisdiction of the board of supervisors to, uh, to address. Okay? So those would be your decorum rules. So what I would ask, with permission of the board, if y'all are satisfied that that accurately reflects the way we've always done it anyway, uh, then I would just simply ask for a motion to add that item under my section and then to approve.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Scott makes a motion to add this to the agenda. Brad, second. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes to add it. Now then, do I have a motion to accept these comment decorum rules?
Motion.
As the board's, okay. Brad makes a mo, no, excuse me. Scott makes a motion.
I'll second.
Brad second. Set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, under my section, item A, uh, is to set a public hearing for March[1767.04] the fifteenth, nine AM, Ashley and Sean Allen Dimensional Bearing Request at State Sale Cove, a District Two property. Just need a motion.
Motion.
All right, Scott makes a motion.
I second.
Sid seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, item D, under my section, is public hearing. Uh, we have scheduled for today and have published notice in the newspaper for a public hearing on proposed amendments to our official zoning ordinance. This has been ongoing for months. Uh, we've had multiple conversations and discussions about proposed amendments. You guys have actually reviewed the proposed amendments that are being made by staff, by our friends at CNPD, uh, others, you guys have weighed in on this. Uh, that package of proposed amendments has been available to you, uh, and my hope is that you've read that. At this time, we are opening that public hearing and I will ask if there is anyone here who intends to speak on the matter of the proposed amendments to the official zoning ordinance for Rankin County. Is there anyone here to speak on that matter? Besides the road manager? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. Uh, we have our friends from CNPD, Dave Wade, Gray Oates, who've been at our side and along helping us with this for some time. Does anyone have any questions that they wish to raise at this time or any comments that they wish to make?
Ready?
Ready to close it?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I had one question on the liquor ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we've got, you know, four hundred feet of a church, kindergarten and, you know, daycare.
Yes, sir.
Uh, could it be possible to add nursing home and assisted living or?
That's, that's gonna be state law. Does the state law? State law have any regulations that you guys know of about nursing homes or assisted living?
Sid, are you, are you wanting to be a shorter distance so that they don't have to walk this floor?
I'm saying, I've got one selfie that, you know, it would not be very good to have it the closer, you know, the further away it is, you know, where they could not walk to get to.
Oh, okay. All right.
Well, that one's already grandfathered.
Uh, okay.
But I just.
Grandfathered.
Right. But in the, in the future.
So Sid's proposal is, even though it's not covered under state law, and here's the thing, I, I, I think Sid, we can in fact introduce some additional regulation. What we couldn't do is in our ordinance shorten that, that footage down. We couldn't say, hey, it's cool in Rankin County, it's only three hundred feet. That won't work, but we can go harder than the state regulates so. You would, you would suggest, and board can, you can take this a, as in the nature of a floor motion. You would, you would suggest, let's go ahead and add nursing home assisted care facilities. How, how would the language be? Nursing home?
Right, well, just, you know, where it says, you know, school, churches, kindergarten and daycare or funeral home, you know, just add nursing home, add nursing home and assisted living also.
No, no, uh, and Renee was correctly pointing out that liquor stores are also only a conditional use, so you could place conditions upon the approval of the conditional use per minute.
So if the idea was to maintain language with the state and not deviate from that as it being a conditional use in those instances where you wanted to add that separation from a nursing home, you can do that in the conditional use process.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. We'll just have to remember, if we get more, we'll have to remember that at the conditional use stage, we ask the question, is there a nursing home? Is there an assisted care facility in close proximity?
And the zoning, the zoning on that, on a liquor store's gotta be what?
I think we're C three.
C three? I mean, that's pretty much.
Yes.
Right. What's a nursing home?
Well, it just be, just depends on, uh, nursing home, assisted living, you know, or, or different as far as zoning.
Right.
Right, zoning wise, they're, they're considered a public place, uh, public facility, so they're a conditional use in any zoning.
Any zoning, could be an A two.
Right, I got you.
If you've got utilities there, you know, you can, you can do it there.
All right, is that, is that answer that question?
That answers the question.
All right, any other questions, gentlemen, before we close it? If y'all are prepared, then I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public hearing, all right? So it's closed on the record now. The next item, Mr. President, is action on your proposed amendments. I would need, if you're prepared, I'm, I would need a motion to approve the proposed zoning amendments.
Most approve. Second.
All right, Jay makes a motion to approve. Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes to approve.
Okay, uh, item E. Keith, do we have photos of that that we could get published or you want me to skip it and come back?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, Mr. President, with your permission, we're gonna skip item E. We've got a little bit of technology that we wanna use for you guys, so this'll give us an opportunity to get that prepared. Uh, item F will be a discussion of and potential action regarding a purchase agreement for real property entered into under the authority of Mississippi COVID-annotated Section nineteen five ninety-nine, Part N three, and the authority of Senate Bill thirty-one nineteen of the nineteen ninety-three legislative session. Authority of the Board President to execute an agreement and authority of the county administrator to take all actions necessary to issue payment of a deposit, transaction expenses and purchase price at times called for under the terms and conditions of this purchase agreement. Gentlemen, this is the two hundred acres of property that's, uh, along and near Mississippi Highway four seventy-five that will be used for economic development purposes. And those two code sections, the, the two, the Senate bill and the code section are authorization for this board to do that very thing. We have a purchase and sale agreement that's been fully reviewed and vetted. The title to the property looks good and clean, uh, and we are getting it staged now for a later closing that will occur sometime on or before May the thirty-first. So this is to approve the execution of the purchase and sale agreement and the tender of the required security deposit. Just need a motion.
Well, Craig, I'd like, just for the record, I was in a meeting this weekend where Gerard Gilbert, who is pretty schooled on, uh, the data centers and what all Amazon initially is gonna bring and not just to that county or this county, but to the area. And slight of, an explosion of these data centers, um, is understatement. So this could potentially be a great thing for Rankin County as far as bringing good, high-paying jobs and taxes to the county. So I, I'm making a motion to go with, uh, I guess.
Purchase agreement.
Purchase agreement.
I'll second.
All right, I've made the motion. Brad seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Uh, item G, gentlemen, is an adoption of a resolution in support of an application for grant funding. This is through the Delta Regional Authority. This will be for assistance in having safe drinking water provided to rural subdivisions not currently served by any private water association in rural Rankin County. We are also authorizing CNPD to make the application, oversee the process for qualifying for that funding. There should be no cost to the county to make, well, certainly no cost to make application. There will be costs associated with the actual grant funding received, assuming that it is. Just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, Brad makes a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Uh, gentlemen, item H is authorization of the Board President to execute a professional services agreement for Wagner Engineering and Benchmark Engineering for all engineering services that are required for the completion of the Rankin County I twenty connector loop, east loop seg, uh, segment, phase A. This is a cooperative agreement amongst the engineers, so this will be for the engineering services related to that portion of the agreement. So it's Wagner and Benchmark.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jack Bishop seconds, well, excuse me. Brad makes a motion. Jay seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Uh, item I, gentlemen, is authority of the county coroner to handle the cremation of an unclaimed body. This is under our unclaimed body cremation ordinance that is adopted. Uh, you see the, the rest of it there, it's under our indigent cremation policy. Authority to pay the invoice upon receipt from Chancellor Funeral Home, the invoice amount will be four hundred and fifty dollars and authority to issue the check. Just need a motion on that.
Motion.
Okay, Scott makes a motion.
I'll second.
Sid seconded the motion. Any other discussion? I have one, and, and I know the answer, but I would like for it to be clear. This person is identified and I guess the investigation into a family member or I don't want us to appear that we're going down the road that a neighbor in county had without contacting relatives. And that has been taken care of.
Yes, sir.
And it's now our responsibility.
Correct. So when the request comes before us, a number of things have already happened. Uh, and typically the coroner has inquired of your policy, in fact requires a, an investigation into, are there means for a private burial or a private manner of handling the remains, right? Are there in fact family members who can, who can be identified and called upon to take responsibility? And generally speaking, Steve, uh, both of those have been investigated and both have been determined that there is not a means for private handling of the remains and there are no family members that, who can be contacted or who are willing to take responsibility.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
We, I have one item to add, we'll do that under additional business, gentlemen. Thank y'all.
Are we gonna go back to E now or are we?
We do need to go back to E. I'm sorry, thank you, Brad. So item E is a discussion and potential action on our Mill Creek curb repair, uh, situation. It's not Mill Creek though, it's Bridgetown.
Yeah.
Bridgetown, that's right.
Spillway Road.
Bridgetown, that, I, I must've said Mill Creek. I was thinking Mill Creek, wasn't I? I don't know how that happened. That's on me. That was my responsibility. Do we have the photos?
All right, we can come back and dish.
Okay.
Do we, do we want to change it and add with the verbiage Bridgetown instead of Mill Creek?
Yes, we, we do need the, uh, agenda to reflect that the correct words is Bridgetown, not Mill Creek.
All right, do I have a motion to?
To add the motion.
All right.
To add Bridgetown.
Scott makes a motion.
Second.
Brad seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All right, Bridgetown is now listed on our agenda for potential action. Um.
Keith.
Keith?
Yes, sir.
Are you still working on the other?
I'm waiting on it.
All right, you want us to skip you?
No, go ahead. Item A is the ARPA project, Neely Creek Ditch Flood Impact Project, is approval of payout application number five to impale construction in the amount of six hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, eighteen cents.
All right, do I have a motion?
Neely, that Neely Creek's Pearl.
Pearl.
Motion approved.
All right.
Second.
Jay makes a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Item B is authority to issue a refund check in the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, four cents, and that's for our former circuit clerk overpayment to hers.
Motion approved.
Jay makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Item C relates to our justice center. Uh, we're trying, have been trying to find someone to work with to evaluate the chiller that's currently there that's twenty-six years old and need a replacement. Uh, we finally reached out and found an engineer, a mechanical engineer that, uh, is willing to look over that and evaluate it for us, and we're asking for board's approval to enter into an agreement with them, uh, to oversee that project. This will be to design the replacement.
All right, do I have a motion?
A motion.
Scott.
Second.
Scott makes a motion. Brad seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
While we're talking about air conditioners, some of us were over in the new building and they were having trouble for a few days last week with the air conditioner and temperatures were getting up pretty hot, uh, and they, it seemed like they were having trouble figuring out what the problem was. Do you?
I don't think it was last week, it was week before.
Week before last, I'm sorry.
They got it fixed, but I'm.
Okay, all right, it's just all of this pretty new building. All right, under additional business, um.
I'd like, yeah, Hayden, can you come up and give us an update on the I twenty?
So everything's, uh, rocking and rolling. Uh, we've had Tim and them, all the great separation, uh, they've been doing some surveying out there on that portion. Uh, we're getting the environmental letters kicked off and rolling on that segment as well. Uh, probably in the next month, month and a half, you'll start seeing some geotechnical guys out there doing some soil borers. Uh, we've been coordinating with the city of Brandon on some potential tower development, uh, getting that squared away and then corresponding with the FRA. Uh, so that's on the great separation portion. Uh, on the le, east loop segment, uh, we've got our survey crew geared up, uh, so they'll be out there on that portion this week. Uh, so we're, we're gonna rock and roll and.
When you say survey crew, what do they survey?
So we, we got the majority of the east loop segment surveyed last time, but there were gaps in between the intersections that had to be, uh, surveyed. Uh, so to be those main, mainly between the key intersections is where we gotta get some additional data to make sure.
And that, after you get that data, it'll go to M dot or what?
It'll, it'll come into our design and we'll get that updated, uh, and get our plans and planning profile and all situated. Um, the, the big portion on east loop is there's some realignment on eighteen that's gotta be redone, uh, that wasn't completed in that first conceptual design phase. So that's kind of the, the heavy lift on that front, so, um, that's what's gonna be underway. And Benchmark is, they're helping out on that bridge design, the new two bridges on eighteen, so, um, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Now we're going back to E.
Mr. President, if you, if we'll, uh, if we can do the one additional business item first on that, uh, this would be a, a request that came from the Pearl School District for some slag for their bus barn. All right, so that, for the new guys, we, we have authority under Mississippi law to help out the school districts, whether it be the Pearl Sephard School District or Rankin County School District for requests typically because they don't have a road department. Uh, and so where they have needs that our road department can help out with, we have the authority to do that. They have to submit a request to us, so we've received a request for some slag at the bus barn at Pearl, so we wanna honor that request. I just need authority to do that. This would be to add it, Mr. President, uh, authority to add the, uh, the request from Pearl School District for some slag work at the bus barn.
I make a motion to add the item.
Okay.
Second.
Jay makes a motion to add request from Pearl School District for slag and Brad seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Yes, now we need to approve it, yes.
Yeah, just so y'all know, I think it's like two or three loads is what they need. I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, Jay makes a motion for approval.
Second.
Brad seconds a motion, any other discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes.
President, we got one item that we skipped over on my section, that's the Bridgetown curb repair. Uh, and so, uh, hopefully, we're gonna have some photos here. Working on it.
We can watch a movie.
Good point.
Thank you. All right, Keith will cycle through, we're just gonna cycle through the photos, y'all, uh, turn your attention there, if you will, uh, to, uh, to the photos, and we'll cycle through those. So what you're gonna be looking at here, gentlemen, is, uh, the area of Bridgetown subdivision. This is off of Spillway, uh, not too far from Hugh Ward, uh, so that kind of orients you where you are on this, uh, and, and we'll just cycle through. What you're seeing is a condition, uh, at points along the curbs where clearly there's been some heavy truck traffic. We don't know precisely who, we have some suspicions, but, uh, but we don't wanna blame any one particular truck driver or school bus driver, or who knows exactly what, that, uh, that has tried to enter the cul-de-sacs a little early, a little prematurely, and they've helped themselves over in, uh, the curbs, and they have caused some damage to the curbs throughout the subdivision. We've had a contractor come out and look at this, uh, and to kind of begin the process. Road manager, myself, the consulting engineer, the supervisor have all been out to look at this, met with the residents. So what you've got here is a lot of older residents, uh, who like to walk, uh, along the, the street and the curbs, and you've got some situations here where there's a lot of trip hazards and, uh, some problems that need to be addressed. And so these are, look, all of this damage that you're seeing here is right inside of our platted street right of way. So, uh, you know, we need, we need to go ahead and, and start to address this as we can. The idea that we've had, I, I don't wanna put words in my supervisor's mouth, but kind of the idea that we've had is that we would take this, uh, as we have a vendor available to help us with this type of repair, we'll try to attack it, um, uh, over time with, uh, handle the worst areas first, and then come along as we have funds available, as we have a vendor handy to do the work, to go ahead and take care of, of all of these issues and try to get them knocked out. So this is Keith cycling through the photos to give you some idea about the type of repair work that needs to be done here, uh, and, and the scale of it, so to speak.
How extensive is it?
It's, it's pretty extensive throughout the development, I would say.
Mike, you got a number yet?
Uh, not yet, I'm gonna contract to get back with the day.
What, what are we doing to prevent this from reoccurring? Does that look like it's, well, a lot of different times?
I don't know that we can prevent it from occurring, Steve. Uh, the, the, the idea would be that we, um, and it's a, it's not a great idea.
We need to talk to our friends at Waste Management and make sure that they do some training with their drivers. Don't get into those curbs, I'm sorry, yeah, don't get into the curbs, but, you know, be, be careful about the entry of the cul-de-sac. That's where most of this damage is occurring. It's at the entry point of the cul-de-sac where, you know how it is with a big truck, Steve? You, you swing out as far as you can to get as much room, and, uh, those, those tires where most of the weight is, is getting up on them.
That's more than one tab running over that concrete thing.
Yes, sir.
That's the sidewalk, it's not really the curb, it's just all sidewalks mostly, ain't it?
Well, it is actually in the curb, uh, it's in the curb, uh, you've got some, uh, some sagging and some sinking in the curbs as well, Sid.
And we did, we did talk to Waste Management, and we have the ability to monitor when a truck leaves the road, and would go off onto a unlevelled surface, which would include running over a turn, and we thought this subdivision prevents from off to here as well. In all fairness, one of these, some of these, uh, turns are really tight.
They're tight.
They're tight.
That's a square.
Man, it looks like a nine-inch grid.
And that's coming out of the cul-de-sac. Yeah, and there's a, a median that was part of the development, right, it's a little nature area that's in the center of the road. So it's, it's a very tight turn for any vehicle of any size to make. Even the FedEx trucks gonna have a hard time with that corner right there.
With the school bus even, does the school bus go down there? And fire trucks, but I'm not blaming fire trucks.
Well, the main thing is when they repair it, we just need to make sure they beef it up, you know, and, uh, 'cause it's gonna continue to happen. You know, just need to make sure we beef it up when they repair it with, uh, the red door.
And heavier.
Yeah, put the red door thicker, make sure it's good foundation up under there.
I do wanna compliment the, the folks that are part of the little HOA, uh, they've been very, very, very easy to work with, and they understand that this is, uh, you know, this is not the kind of request typically that we, you know, we don't have money just laying around to deal with this. And so they've been very, very careful about interacting with us, and they understand that there's probably gonna be a need for patience as we try to address this over time. Again, my idea, and it's just mine, you guys get to decide, but my idea was to pick off the worst, the couple of examples of the worst areas and address those, and then maybe, uh, in the next budget cycle, we pick up the next two, and we try to address those, and we just systematically address them as funds are available. Uh, and I think these folks out here would be more than tickled, uh, just to know that, that supervisor's doing what he can to try to help them.
All right, um, this is discussion of potential action on Bridgetown curb. How do we wanna style our motion?
That's really up to you guys. Yeah, so my idea would be to have a motion that we authorize road manager to undertake this, and the consulting engineer to undertake. It's, it's gonna end up being more than likely a bid project. Um, it's gonna need to be, uh, stood up so that it can be actually bid out.
Saying my own card here, it's just gonna be a commodity.
Depending on how much we could, it won't be a commodity, it's gonna be two quote.
It could be a two-quote deal, so whatever, whatever the authority needs to be for the consulting engineer to help us with the quote package, right? To get the two quotes, and then to address systematically over time the repair work using the two-quote process. That's what I would suggest as a motion.
And it's gonna be funded out of, uh, road manager's budget or general?
Yeah, so. I need some help on that, what we doing, Mike?
You don't really have that say, but, yeah, I, it ain't enough to worry about, he said it was only like seventy thousand.
Oh, I didn't hear him say that.
Let's try to handle it in my budget right now, so you can, if, if we get our prices, I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
We do, do a little bit this little time.
You guys.
You might approve quote.
Yes, whenever we get those in, yeah.
The quote, the quote's gonna be replacing all of it at one time, or the worst at one time?
It's, really depends on what you guys want. Right now, I think my consulting engineer's thinking he's gonna pick off two of the worst spots. But it, we may be better off if the contractor says to us, you know, y'all would be better off, it's gonna let me do it all.
Let's look at doing the whole thing.
Now, maybe if you just authorize getting the quotes on it?
Yeah.
And that way, and we'll work with the, we'll talk to it and figure out if we do it all, and then get a quote, or if we gotta break it up and do some down and some in the next budget or however.
All right.
I mean, it could still be done this year, but it'd be after Oc, October, so.
Well, some of it down, some of it. All right, give me a motion.
Motion.
All right. Scott makes a motion to, uh, let's see.
Put out for Bridgetown.
Uh, quotes, to get, to get us quotes to repair, uh, these sidewalks and curbs in Bridgetown, um, and we'll let that
Report back to the board.
And that'll make the decision is whether we do it all at once.
That's correct, he's gonna report back to the board what he's found out from the vendor. So he's gonna, he's gonna do a quote package for us, Steve, on Bridgetown curb and sidewalk repair.
All right, Scott makes a motion.
Words right out of my mouth.
Do I have a second?
I second.
See, it's second set motion, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
That's the end.
That's the end? Yeah, we added it, and then come back and talk about it, and then we All right, do we have a need for executive? I, I would like to have a short executive personnel. So do I have a mo, I'll make a motion. Sir?
Well, yeah, I will.
Oh, yeah, let's do that.
We had our traffic studied, we did, or not studied, we met, I told y'all about the signalization over there. Um, we met with PRV, and at the time, we were thinking we were gonna move the road over to a line where Shaggy's was, so we can just do one red light right there to catch both sides. But it was gonna end up being a lot of work, and there's a cliff or the drop-off right there, we'd have to spend all kind of money. So we're scrapping that, going back where we started. We got two options, we can either just do a red light right there where the, um, soccer fields come out and not do anything else, or we put one there and then go on up and put another one there, they'll operate as one unit, but obviously it'll cost a little more money, and, you know, they, they were on board with it, um, and our prices kinda changed on, all this is gonna be temporary because they have their project they won't come in through. I don't imagine we'll be able to use wood poles, but hopefully we could still do the metal poles without the big mast arms, because those things take months to get in, um, and also the cost goes way up. But we're looking at, uh, with just, uh, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, take care of everything. The Shaggy's and the, um, the soccer fields, and that's with metal poles. So, but that'll be like a wire hanging over the top of it, though, which they don't, not supposed to allow big trucks to there anymore anyway, so that shouldn't really be an issue.
So the issue, if, if, what I've given you, Jay, we, we priced out mast arms too. There's a little bit of conflicting information as to whether we're actually gonna be able to drill a hole on the reservoir side of Spillway that's fairly close to their fuse plug there, uh, which is the emergency spillway for the, uh, for the reservoir, uh, and, and the wood poles and, and the, and the metal poles would require, the metal pole actually requires a foundation, the wood pole goes in the ground, obviously, too. The mast arms would, would not be that close, they'd be in the median and on the, uh, on the, I guess it'd be the, the south side of, uh, of the road. They wouldn't be on that side, on the water side. Uh, so we really, we're, we're trying to work with, to figure out, uh, they've talked about potentially getting some geotech work out there to do that, so
Really?
There, there's a question as to whether we can actually use the metal poles, which is why we have the mast arm in here. We may be forced to use the mast arm, we just don't know that yet.
Wow, that makes the price go way up.
Yeah, the mast arms are each one, and, and one of them's a dual, and, and then you've got a single, so you've got, uh, yeah, it's, it's a considerable price difference.
Well, I guess we'll just wait till we find out what we need to do. Do we need to authorize anything for them to go through? Do we need to get the geotechnical, or is PRV gonna do that?
I think PRV's gonna force us to, yeah.
Yeah, I think PRV's gonna force us to, or, I talked to Mark the other day, and he was looking into it and gonna talk to some people first, 'cause like I said, it's right there, it's a corner of that fuse plug, Jake, and, uh, he was a little concerned about drilling a hole in the right one right there.
So the other problem is, these boxes that run our, um, lights, signalizations, and they're tenth months out right now. So we probably need to order us extra anyway, just, 'cause, you know, we had to replace one a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I've actually talked to Temple about when we want to make this order to go ahead and get another box cabinet for us, because this'll be probably number ten, and, you know, I've had two damages since I've been here, and just gotta look if we have one or not.
So do they have one in stock?
I was checking, and I hadn't heard back from Louis, yeah.
All right.
Temple, the Temple didn't, but Louis.
Well, hopefully, we can get all this information gathered for our next meeting.
Sure.
All right.
And we don't need, we don't really need the authorization. If they need geotech, we can do that under our professional services agreement with the county.
Okay.
Geotech done.
All right.
Let's kind of update y'all one more.
Thank you.
All right, so there's no action taken on that, now then, um, I make a motion to go into executive, no, the need to go into executive session for personnel. Do I have a second? Jay seconds that motion, all in favor? Motion passes, now I make a motion to be in executive session for personnel reasons.
Second.
Jay seconds, all in favor? Motion passes.